Vice Mayor Greta Conne, I will call this meeting of October 12th to order. Start with the pledge to the flag. Get all the grace. Vice Mayor, do you think?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The lawyers, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Stransky?
Yes.
Conne?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
So just so everyone knows, our mayor is not here this evening. She will be updated about this meeting after the meeting. It's now time for public communications, so if they're -- oh, I'm sorry. This is my first time doing this, so bear with me, I might goof a little bit here. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the vice mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council can take no action on these public communications, as these are not agendized matters. Anyone from the public like to speak to the council? And if you could state your name when you come to the podium?
Good evening. I'm Vice Mayor of the Council, Davey Bolz, building official of the City of Willes. I'm not on the agenda tonight, so I am in the public matter, but I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, the City of Willes is participating in an EBB program, Earthquake Brace and Bolt. The City of Willes became eligible by zip code last year, after the registration date, unfortunately, but this year, we have a full opportunity to get our community to apply to this program. So it's a grant program. It's paid for in part by California Earthcode Authority, Cal OES, and FEMA. And so what this program does is it allows people with a house built pre-1980, that has crawl space built on like a permanent foundation, but it wasn't quite built to code, current code. And so it allows, it's a $3,000 grant, to basically retrofit, seismically retrofit your house. So it involves basically cheering the crawl space, bolting down your sill plate to your foundation. There's many ways to accomplish this. There's pre-approved plan sets for this, that are already in the works, so it's, you don't have to hire an engineer unless you have a really, really bizarre structure. So most likely, everyone here is going to qualify using the pre-approved plans. So it's pretty simple, it's about a 12 to 13 question application. There is a supplemental grant on that for low income, so if your family household makes less than $7,200, you can potentially get a larger grant, over $3,000, which would also include paying for a contractor's quote, and also the full building permit fee. So it's a great program, I'm excited that we're able to participate this year. We will be putting out Facebook blasts here soon, and there'll be a link on our website. So if you know of anyone that's looking to retrofit their house, you know, have them take a look at our website, and we're always here to answer questions and help people through the process. But it's a, it's a great program, and it's a really good incentive for people to take on this task. We have a lot of older stock housing that has these similar issues, and basically, when you do get the big one, it'll keep your house on its foundation. So anyway, that's what I want to say, I just want to get it out there, if you know of anybody, spread the word in the community, this is available, and I look forward to people getting applications. So, thank you.
Would you say the name of the program again?
It's Earthquake Brace and Bolt. So if you Google that, you'll get, you know, there'll be a million hits for that, and all of them take you to the same place. It's, if you just do the acronym EBB, you'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Davey.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? All right, moving on to enactment of ordinances, so we have none this evening. So now we'll take a look at the consent calendar. In tonight's packet, we have the item to approve minutes from the September 28th meeting. Is that a motion?
I'll second it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the table to approve the city council minutes from September 28th. Does anyone from the public have any comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Can we do this one with just a simple eyes? Roll call. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. All right, moving on to item six, monthly activity reports. These are matters that do not require action by the city council, but are of public interest. If you're interested in looking at the business license activity for September of 2022, those are included in the packet and are available on the city's website. Item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. The Willet City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willet's Planning Commission and City of Willet's Successor Agency. We do not have any items on the agenda tonight for those boards. So we're quickly advancing through this agenda and moving on to item eight, city manager reports and recommendations. The first item is a resolution in support of Mendocino County Measure P, to propose sales tax to fund fire protection and prevention. Take it away, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, or Acting Mayor. So what we're looking at right now, we actually have two resolutions before the council. I will break them up. We do have Chief Carter in the audience that will speak on behalf of the fire element, and Melinda Klar, so speaking on behalf of the funding for the library system for the county. The first item, item 8A, the resolution for support of Mendocino County Measure P, the council received an update at the previous meeting from Chief Carter and the Fire Council, the Firewise Council, on behalf of the measure and its benefits to the community and the county at large. And at that time, the council directed staff to compose a resolution in support of the measure, and that is what is before you tonight. So I will allow Chief Carter to speak, if you want to advocate for this measure.
I'd love to, yeah. So William Carter, Willet Fire Chief, and thanks, Council, for taking this on and giving us a chance to speak. I know we spoke about it quite a bit at the, at the online meeting, the last meeting, so I won't go into too deep of details, but, you know, Measure P, it really was handed to us, really, to the county supervisors. We really had nothing to do with its creation, or its guidance coming our way, we just kind of, it was offered to us and talked about, and we, of course, looked into it. It doesn't raise any public taxes, the taxes stay the same, it just diverts them to us and to the Fire Safety Council. So it really wasn't anything that we were seeking, it's actually kind of a windfall, for lack of a better word. So, you know, we are looking to bolster some budgetary items, some equipment, some repair items, not salaries so much as paid staff, but salaries to the volunteers to come in and staff the department in times of need, which we can't currently really do, at least not very often. And that's kind of how we're going to initially look at these funds. I am looking to, if it happens, if it passes, we're going to line item these funds, we're going to, again, for lack of a better word, we're going to police them, and see how they come in, how we spend them, and that way we can keep some sort of a running tally if we're asked where they're going, we'll have a good idea where they're going. Again, I mean, there's not a lot to say, we didn't create it, there's a little bit of misinformation out there, people are calling us going, "What's the fire tax? What are you guys doing?" Again, it is a fire tax, but it's not a tax that we created, and I'd like people to really understand that. And the fact that it's, it's going to bolster the tax roll from our traveling public, which we serve a lot, and a lot of things that we do, a lot of responses that we do, are people that don't live here, out of the county, out of our tax bracket, and they'll be paying into this, and those funds are going to help to assist down as well, which currently we have no resource for that. So, that's pretty much all I have, if you guys have questions for me.
Chief, when you talk about staffing, now, what would be days that you'd staff, or whatever, time of year that you would staff?
If we're, if we're out of county, you know, we do a lot out of county, not a lot, but when the call comes in, we'll send an engine, maybe a team leader. At that time, we're kind of low, it seems like most of our out-of-county responses are people who respond a lot for us. So at that time, it can be a little, a little tricky for me to allow that engine to leave, 3O staff, three people on it, plus the engine, and then have to worry about getting people, you know, at the scene of the next emergency locally. So we'll be able to put a captain, an engineer, a firefighter in quarters for that week, or 14 days that they're gone, and that way, when the tone goes out, we're not just not having our current responders respond a lot, we'll have somebody right there to respond right away, which, it's a big deal.
So that'll be your strike team mutual aid responses?
Exactly.
Because we get people to respond here.
And you know, and we're also looking, and this is all imaginary, because we don't have these funds, so we're just kind of forecasting what we might be able to do. Anytime there's a big concert in the area, bad weather, predicted storms, you know, that kind of stuff, we'll power them and go out, things like that. Put them in quarters, we have a backup generator, you know, they'll have access to what they need to respond, and we can get out right away.
And so, for the public, the way I understand it, Measure B is sunsetting?
Exactly.
Because of mental health, and so the money that would have not, the money that was currently being paid out in sales tax to Measure B would continue, but now to the fire department, to the library?
Right. If I read it correctly, that A of it said that sunsets, that remains, if the vote goes positive, is just going to be redirected.
So when, when, I guess to put it clearly for everybody, it's not a, it's not a, it is a new tax in the sense that it's a new proposition that we have locally, a measure, but that it, in essence, it's going to redirect a sunsetting tax and allow us to capture some of that money that, so...
And that's how I understand it, too.
Yeah.
Like I said, we didn't, we didn't go out for it, we didn't design it, but that's how it's playing for us, so.
So yes, for clarification, and it also tags on to the library measure, the County Board of Supervisors has decided to take their existing tax, the sales tax allocation, what they receive, how they collect it, and they're just redistributing it. So it's basically to fire protection, fire prevention measures, and then a portion to the library system as well.
And this is countywide?
Countywide. Yes.
All 20 departments, 22 departments, there's Fort Rag doubles up, UCAI doubles up, so there's 20 departments that are going to benefit, plus the Fire Safety Council is going to benefit as well.
And do you also see that during times where, you know, a couple of times in the last couple of years where we've had red flag events where you knew that you'd have to staff?
Exactly. So, and that's what I mean by, it seems locally lately, every time there's a red flag event in Lake County, we send a team over there. If that's such a terrible fire mishap, so we send a team almost every red flag morning. So when we do that, we kind of leave ourselves a little unprotected, we take care of it, but it does open us up.
But we also have our own red flag events here, too.
Well, for sure, for sure. And the county, they did staff us, the last one as well, and then heat wave, which was really nice. We had a local strike team, plus our team was out of county, but at those times, we'd be able to staff the station and have us ready to build.
Thank you, sir.
Are there questions from council?
Can I comment? Or, it's not a question of the chief, but, okay. We had a forum on Sunday, and we heard not only from Chief Carter, but also from John Hascheck, and from Scott Craddy, who's with the Fire Safety Councils countywide. We also have several active Fire Safety Councils in our community here, in Shrewood Road Community is one of the first, and kind of a sample, example of how the community is doing fire safety. But, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of other things that John Hascheck pointed out. It is by, it's a general tax to the county general fund, but the Board of Supervisors has specified exactly how it will be spent, and 90% is going to the 22 fire districts, and they have an agreement amongst all of them about how that gets divided in an equitable way. And then the other 10% is going to these countywide prevention efforts, which includes home hardening, and, you know, safe distances, and all of that around the houses. And Scott Craddy, who directs that, has been really instrumental in bringing in a lot of grant funds, and this funding source will enable him to get matching grants, and he's pointing out that, like, Sonoma County is way ahead on fire prevention, and that's what we want, we want to really prevent the fires, and then, if we have to, we fight them, of course. So I think it's a, the fact that the County Board of Supervisors has specified how they want that fund to be spent, it's in writing, everybody can track whether, in fact, it's being done that way, even though it's not by law specified to the fire districts, but it is by resolution, and it's trackable, and then, so I felt very assured that the County Board isn't going to, like, grab that money and then spend it on something else, so I thought that some people were concerned about that, since it is a general tax.
Thank you, Madam.
That is true, and we've had some pushback in that matter, we've had to explain that as well, so it is out there, so. Little?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Public?
Any public comment about this Measure P? Hearing none? Shall we move on to item B?
Right.
Or do we, we need to take a motion on that?
Yes.
So I would like to move that we support this resolution and support Measure P.
Okay, do you have a second?
I would like a second.
Thank you, Madam. All right. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Before we jump or transition from fire to libraries, this is an opportunity to thank Chief Carter and the district for their attention during the Warka Fire Event, in helping us out at the water, facility surface water plant. I heard great things about the coordination that you crew had, and with Scott's crew, so I just want to commend you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also without a talent in that, but came back in after.
Your leadership was still present.
I was still going the whole time. You're not right.
So, thank you. All right, so item 8B, very similar, similar context, where we have a countywide measure, where the Board of Supervisors have taken existing sales tax allocation.
It's not, this one was not initiated by the board.
Ah, this is from the...
Citizens Initiative.
Yes, but it was, the Board of Supervisors read through it through a resolution?
I, well, I think when enough signatures come in, they have to put it on the ballot, but they made sure that that...
It didn't compete.
That it didn't compete.
Yes, so there was a slight separation there. So once again, it's still looking at the intake, the original, the mass intake of sales tax that the county collects, and it's a reallocation of those funds, in this case, to support the countywide library system. And this item, Member Strong reached out to me and said, "Hey, if we're going to do it for the fire, let's look to do one for the library," and we said, "Yes." We do have a branch within our community, and rightly so, so the council should be expressing their interest and support. And we have someone to speak on their behalf.
Okay, good. I don't really have to comment, because you guys said all the important stuff already, but Measure O is a wonderful improvement on Measure A, which was given a chunk of time to test, to see if it was going to really be needed, and would the monies be spent well? And we have wonderful evidence that after Measure A came into being, the circulation went up, and the participation of everybody went up, and it's just been a tremendous success. We love Measure A, and it is sunsetting, so now Measure O comes along, and it, like Madge and somebody else said, too, it was a citizens initiative. Unlike the fire people, we said, "We're going to be in bad trouble if we don't institute a new measure," so that's why we went around to all the towns in the county, and we got signatures enough, got on the ballot, so we only need a majority vote, not a two-thirds, because we initiated it. What's good about it is, again, like with P, no tax increase, we are paying that quarter of a penny. What we get for a quarter of a penny is amazing. It is for library funding only, nobody else gets their mitts on it, and it's permanent. So I think if I have to come out here in 11 years, I'm going to be really old, so it'll be permanent, and that's a wonderful thing. 60, 60% of it goes to books, and DVDs, and CDs, and materials, and newspapers. We get them, newspapers back again, after being with Athem from COVID, we couldn't, you know, we couldn't get our hands on things. But now we can, and 40% is for capital improvements, and this is where we've been pretty worried. When I was going around getting signatures, people said, "Oh, no, we can't have holes in the roof of the Willet's Library, and all the books are going to get wet, that will be very bad." So we get dry books, and actually written into, and I didn't bring my notes, I've got it at home, it's a grant that we're going to get, matching funds should Measure O pass. We'll get, like, $240,000 from the state to work on, to fix our roof, the library's roof, imagine that. It's a wonderful thing. So, and other things that that matching grant money will buy as well as some increased hotspots, so people can, can use the tech capacity, solar panels for, in places, and increase the ability to, if we have an emergency, that we will still be able to have services, some generators, solar pattern, panelled, and that will be a wonderful tech increase. So, and you might not know this, but the library in Leightonville is scheduled to open in January, so we're going strong, and I appreciate everybody voting for it. Everybody has signed on the website, but you can go to it, yesonlibraries.org, and find out anything else you want to know about it, and I thank you all for being so supportive. Thank you so much.
Oh, should I stand up here in case anybody has questions?
Yes. Thank you. Any council members have questions for Melinda?
You know, I just kind of want to, since you're up here, I want to thank you for going around, I just want to point out that growing up, I started school not speaking English, and in the evenings or after school, I would go to the library with my siblings, and it was a resource. And obviously, things have updated now, and there's tech available, and hotspots for a lot of people that don't have internet in the community, they can go there and get online, and it meant a lot. I've been a library card holder since it was the Carnegie Library, and it would flood in the wintertime, and then, when they moved over here. So I think it's important, I think as a community, it's important for us to have a strong library presence, and I think it levels the playing field with both the rich and poor in the community. I think I've seen all walks of life down there, and during the emergencies we've had, during the fires, people were down there using the Wi-Fi to get their news, so I just wanted to...
I'm so glad you pointed that, pointed that out. One of the things that's really come home to us working on the Measure O, it's not just the books, it's the place. Like you're saying, it's a safe space, and to me, it's like one of the pillars of democracies to have a library that's for everybody.
Come here. Anybody else?
I just also wanted to point out that there's a lot of programs that are special events, and the use of the library community room. I just recently went to one of the history talks, and they have the Weavers, and they have various other community groups that meet there, and... We have a Lego club. And children's programs, and storytimes, and stuff like that, so it's, this is enabling them to do a lot more outreach, and not just, and well, it's all across the county, and I think it's really money well spent for our democracy. We need libraries.
Thank you. Before we, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make my motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, would anybody from the public like to speak to this matter? Okay. Have a roll call, then.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conne?
Yes.
unanimous support of our library and our fire department.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No? Should I be done? What?
I have a couple officers that need to get back to the street, and they would like to say something really quick, if you wouldn't mind?
Uh, yes, perfect. Well, actually, what I was going to do was, I would never do that, Sergeant Brady. I just want to say publicly that the city congratulates you on your new posting, it's sad to see you go. You were a wonderful influence on this department and community. Best of luck in your future endeavors, I'm going to miss you.
All right, thanks.
I see you don't agree with the move.
Right. There's my thunder. So anyway, good evening, everyone, it's great to see everybody here, and it's been an interesting journey. So first and foremost, I want to introduce new officer Cody Marokey, stand up a little quick. Cody comes to us with a little bit of experience, and so he's going to fit in real nicely. So, just kind of want to thank everybody, I've been here almost four and a half years now, transferred down from the city of Riedel in Humboldt County, and I did a lot of times a police officer up there, so very used to the small communities, and a lot of the community care things that go on in the city, and I've been glad to kind of spearhead some of the programs that we've had. And, yeah, it's been a little topsy-turvy at times, guys, but I think right now, you guys are in a great place as far as the personnel and such that you have onboard. Good, bad, or indifferent, moving into a different phase, everything has a season, so I'm just moving on to a different phase in my life, and law enforcement has been great to me, I've been doing it for the past 22 years, so what do you do? So, thanks again, everybody, for, this community is great, there's a lot of really good people here, and everybody has been receptive since I've been here, and it's still good to see somewhat of the community I came from, just the appreciation for just people that are just, you know, doing things here, and so again, we have a lot of good folks here, just happy to serve, so thank you again.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other item that I want to bring up, more in the theme of good news, we're meeting in person. That's a good thing. It's okay. You're going to notice that we have made some changes to the appearance and aesthetics of city hall, especially the council chambers, we want to make it a little bit more inviting, and also note the presence, the history of this community, and we want to make it a showcase, this building a showcase for the community as well. Unfortunately, our major renovations are grinding away, they're not quite there yet, but in a few more weeks, we're going to have our counters installed, painting finished, more artwork up on the walls. It's very promising that we were able to get all this done, I want to appreciate the staff effort and the council's support for the work, and just the changes that we have initiated. It's churning the corner, it's going to be better for the community, we're going to improve our service. So yes, I'm just glad that we're meeting in person, and this room is just kind of a representation of our support and our recognition that the council, or that the community supports or shows to the council and to the staff, so I just want to let that be known.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I would also like to acknowledge and thank Karen Mattson from the county museum, and Brent Walker, who is the president of the Friends of the Museum, who spent the last couple of days putting up the information artwork you see behind you, which is from the museum collection. It's all local Willet's history, and they spent a lot of, a lot of time on that, it looks fantastic, and the idea is to have rotating collections in our city hall chambers to be able to showcase our heritage and our local art, so thank you to them.
Thank you, that, that's a good touch, I think. Really good touch.
I agree.
So that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, item nine, department recommendations and actions. We have an item to discuss and possibly act on approving the annual water distribution plan. Public Works Director Scott Herman, Scott Herman will be presenting this.
Do you mean Vice Mayor, councilmembers? The Public Works Department prepared the attached annual water distribution system plus... flushing plan to document the city's routine water making activities. Plan follows a technical memo that council reviewed at July 27th meeting that described the problem and emphasized the importance of annual flushing as part of a phased response. In recent years, the community has experienced brownwater, frequent brownwater events. Water customers experience brownwater when there's a sudden change in velocity in the water system pipes. It stirs up any accumulated sediment. Annual flushing of the city's water distribution system reduces these occurrences. These maintenance activities are conducted during periods of low water demand, typically between December and April, with possible modified flushing during drought years. With the recent addition of the groundwater as an approved source to offset the use of surface water, Public Works can schedule annual flushings on a regular basis. Attached is the annual water distribution system flushing plan for the council's consideration. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone from the council have any questions to clarify this item? Does anyone from the public have any questions regarding this item?
So I just want to build on the intro that Scott provided. So if you recall, I think it was July, that Rod Wilburn, the city engineer, presented two technical memos. And this is kind of an extension of that effort, as noted. And we want to basically confirm to the council, and one of the things I've heard from the council was, what are we doing about brownwater in our system? And in turn, we talked to Scott and Rod and said, hey, look, these are our options. And flushing is the best option that we have. And this past spring, the crew did a comprehensive flushing of the system, first time in what, two years, three years? Comprehensive. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it continuous. We had some breaks through there, some gaps, but it was basically from start to finish in the system. And we have seen the results. Subsequently, the amount of episodes of brownwater that residents and county holders experience has decreased. Yes, they're still out there, especially when there's pulses going through the system, pressure changes when we have to do work on valves or replace.
Car accidents.
Car accidents, hydrants, you know, blowing up. But, you know, those are everyday occurrences, and the crew deals with them to the best of their ability. But this is kind of, if you notice, we have a format of these plans and these policies. And that's what it is. It's a policy. It's a recommendation from staff to the council on how we're going to address these capital improvements and infrastructure items. We are budgeting for that. Enterprise funds do have set aside that we can utilize either for contractors or additional staff time. We recognize the importance of dealing with this. The water line that you were just working on.
It's a magnolia.
And that's an old steel line that is going to be replaced or has been replaced.
60 feet of it.
So that's one of the aspects of the, you know, recommendations to reduce brownwater episodes is line replacements, flushing. You know, that is kind of the low hanging fruit on that tree. And as we go forward and get our heads around the commitment that we are expressing to the council, we'll have staff follow through.
Are we still having any incidents or having a problem with people, unauthorized people, taking water out of hydrants?
No. Not sure.
Not that you have?
Yeah. Haven't heard of any, at least. We do have locking caps on most of the hydrants, so it takes a special wrench to get the caps off, or called hurricane caps.
If someone is doing that, which thankfully they aren't now, but does that also cause a fluctuation in the pipes that?
It depends on how fast they open the valve. I mean, you could open it slowly and then not even stir it up, or you could open it all the way up really fast, and that's when you.
Yeah. So that's what happens when somebody runs into a fire.
Hydrants, yeah. Okay. You know, I just want to take the time to say thank you to your staff. I think in the spring, I was walking my dog on the west side and stopped and chatted with them and noticed some of those, honestly, they looked like giant pieces of rust. They said, I thought it was rust pieces from, so there was manganese in the system that.
Oh, wow.
And they look like rust chips.
Yeah, they're big.
Yeah. I was taken aback. I'm used to, like everybody else, when somebody hits a fire hydrant, and we get the brown water, and, you know, all of a sudden, your toilet looks brown, and it's not because of, you know, it's because the water coming through is passing through the system. And you obviously don't want to run laundry during that period, but to watch those chunks coming out when they were doing the flushing was an eye opener for me.
Yeah.
I mean, I've told people, I think you guys, if some of the public were to happen to get ahold of you, you could probably show them what they're talking about. Because most people think it's rust and that our lines are rusty and that we should put in new lines. And we're like, well, yeah, we need to put in new lines. But I always tell people, you know, some of that's manganese that occurs, and that's naturally occurring. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what you see too is, anytime you exercise a valve as well, because they sit instead, you don't meet them unless you need to isolate it or emergency or anything. Once you exercise it, it breaks anything that's sitting on the valve. So typically, it'll take about, depends on the valve where it's at, but it'll take anywhere from 10 to 15 seconds. And then you'll see clear water first, and then you'll see a slug of brown because it's from that valve. Accumulates in low spots mainly and on the surface of the pipe inside.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Do we have a motion?
I recommend an action. Recommend an action.
Second.
And do we have any public comment about this? Did I already ask that? Okay. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie?
Yes.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Item 10 is Department Monthly Reports. These are presented at the second meeting of each month, so we will actually do these next council meeting. Item 11, City Council Announcements, Communications, and Reports. And we're going to start off with the Finance Committee, which was held on September 29th. Mayor Rodriguez and I attended that meeting with Finance Director Manny, I just forgot my last name.
Arosco.
Arosco, thank you.
Manny's fine.
And City Manager Bender. It was a productive meeting. Would you like to share what you covered with the council?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. On September 29th, we basically reviewed the budget. After that, we completed the biannual budget. We moved on to fiscal policies. And one of the main topics that I wanted to kind of address was the purchasing policy, the SGE policy, cash handling policy, fixed asset policy, financial crisis policy, and also a reserve policy. And with those reserves, we wanted to kind of implement multiple items, which was operating contingency, infrastructure, vehicle replacement, and IT reserves. And so we discussed multiple options for that and what that would look like. And we're still kind of mulling over exactly how we want to go about that. We've kind of hashed out some things and other things. We're kind of still milling out as we go along. One of the plans behind that is that every biannual budget will be re-updating each of those policies, so they're always staying fresh. And after that, we just talked about the state controllers audit. That didn't happen for whatever reason. And then, and requests for new proposals in the Measure K committee.
Thank you. I wanted to say that one of the things that was a real takeaway for me was, this was our first time passing a biannual budget, so we're not going to do a budget again next year. We have a two-year budget. And one of the real benefits of that is it's freeing up time for Manny to look closely at our other policies, our other financial policies, and he's got a plan for everything. It's really reassuring. And it's just nice to see him digging in and finding ways to make things very transparent for the council as well as the public. It was a good meeting. It was inspiring and made me feel like we're on good financial footing and we're moving in a very positive direction.
I have a question for you. What is the status right now of the Measure K Oversight Committee?
So right now, I have sent items over for review to do an application process along with just kind of a general scope of what we're looking for and things like that, so that we can start selecting committee. We are still milling over the size and what the scope is of the committee itself. And then we, I'll, we will just bribe Brian a little bit in order to be able to kind of talk about a little bit the specifics behind that, of what we're thinking here. But for the most part, we're still at the planning phase.
Okay. So there is not yet a committee?
Yeah. No, not yet a committee. We're working on it though.
Okay.
And just to remind the public, the Measure K committee is to be made up of members of our community to help provide oversight on how the Measure K funds are being spent. And Measure K was what voters put into action a year and a half ago, last fall. And those.
Previous fall.
Previous fall. Those funds are to be used for improving the infrastructure or improving.
General fund activity.
General fund activity in our community. And so to have public input and public oversight is essential.
And right now, what we're looking at is a lot of the ordinance and what is going to be the makeup of that committee and what is the scope, how it's going to function.
Can I just add something for the public? I think we've all been working with the fact that your position was vacant for a while or was the reason, I think, members of the public asked me, when are we going to do this? And we kind of needed a finance director so that we could get our finances in order to be able to do this. So I think that's kind of to put it out to the public. That's why we were late doing this, is we didn't have a finance director as part of the whole thing. And I wanted to kind of throw that out to folks who are in the community and folks that have asked me. It wasn't any nefarious reason. It's, we needed somebody to start doing the kind of stuff you're doing so that we can report on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
Just one other question is that, especially since we now have a two-year budget, we're going to still have periodic updates on how we're doing compared to the budget. So is that going to be like quarterly or six months or when?
Right now, it's going to be quarterly. I'm going to try and get quarterly out there, but maybe year becomes more important when it comes to a biannual budget. So what ends up happening is that my hope is to get quarterly out to you by either next month or even in December. Unfortunately, it's kind of us catching up with audits still. And so I am starting the fiscal year 2021 and 2122 audit very soon. Kind of walking myself in the office and just kind of running through all the numbers and sending journal entries out to get done so that we can actually get that thing started. But, yeah, and then after that, entering the budget into the system and getting things is among my top priorities for this week. So.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Just kind of building on that. So the Finance Department, it started last month and it will continue, they're going to enter into the selection of the monthly reports. So you're going to receive updates from the Finance Department, and we'll work it so that there's this quick little snapshot of, you know, expenditures based off allocations. Just a quick little snapshot for your benefit.
At any time during the two-year period of the budget, we can amend the budget if some changes.
Yes, yes, at any time. And there could be other situations where we bring up council items that will have a budget amendment associated with it. And so those are many budget amendments throughout the year. And then a big budget amendment, which is in our mid-year, occurs sometime around like January to February to just kind of update where we're at and what needs to adjust to be able to accommodate the remaining part of the year. They get really important on the second year because when you're looking two years out, you don't always know what's happening. No one in 2019, sorry, would have realized that 2020 was going to be shut down the way it was. So these kind of things are definitely necessary in order to be able to just kind of keep review. But the interesting thing about a biannual budget is that it forces you to constantly look at your budget and look at your actions. So instead of it being pro forma like every other year, by the time you get to reviewing your budget on an annual basis, you're already starting on the next year's budget. So it almost becomes a situation where you can take your eye off the ball on budgets to actions. With a biannual budget, you're constantly looking at it.
And I want to just say that, it maybe goes without saying, but it is such a joy to have you in the Finance Department finally to really feel confident that we're getting tracked properly with the finances. It's been wonderful to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Manny? Thank you very much. Madge, do you have any reports of any meetings or meetings that you attended?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Tomorrow, there is an Economic Development and Finance Commission meeting, just EDFC. And just today, they put out another call for any micro businesses, that's any businesses that employ five or fewer employees, that they have $2,500 grants available, they haven't expended all this money. So if there's any business out there that was affected by COVID and it's local and employs fewer than five people, talk to EDFC. And then a week later, there's going to be a meeting of the Minnesota Solid Waste Management Authority, ENSWA, or also called MendoRecycle. And they've just sent out the agenda for it. They have not included yet a contract for the expected privatization of the services through C and S in Ukiah. So I just sent an email saying, where is it? Because we are hoping to make that transition by the end of the year, and we haven't, there's three contracts involved. There's the actual services with C and S, there's a contract with Ukiah City to be the administrator. They have the best staffing to do that. And then the third one is the land or the facility that ENSWA owns. And but we want to make sure that we continue, the public owns that facility, so that if at some point we want to have it come under public management again, we have the facility. And it's a very specialized facility, dealing with all these hazardous wastes and stuff. So anyway, those three contracts are expected momentarily, I hope.
Thank you.
And meanwhile, they have not been spending anywhere near what is budgeted to spend because they are really low on staff. I think that's why we also, the ENSWA is not providing the Willet's services that they should be providing. They just do not have the staff, and that's part of why we're privatizing it.
Councilman Gonzalez, do you have?
No, I think LAFCO did not meet this month, and I think they're going to meet next month. And I'm the alternate for that, so depending on whether they need me or not. We have our tobacco ad hoc. I checked in with Brian, and he had not, I wanted to double check that the folks in the tribe maybe hadn't gotten, left any messages with him, and they hadn't. And I think I'm still waiting to see who else we need to chat with. Otherwise, I would like to invite somebody from the county office event to come, maybe not at our 26th meeting, but maybe at the next meeting afterwards, if I can round somebody up to tell us what they're doing in the schools. So, have you heard from anybody?
No.
Okay.
Councilman Stransky?
Yes, I've more or less volunteered to, I haven't been asked the council for this direction, but go to the Chamber of Commerce and find out what is going on and try to help them if I can and relay some of the information back to the council. And I think that we need to work together better, and so that's what I wanted to do. So I went and asked them.
And will you be going again?
Yeah, 25.
Okay. Do you have any report so far?
No. I have been to a meeting. I just went and asked.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
We'll see.
I attended the museum advisory board meeting this morning. It was our first in-person meeting, so two big firsts today. They are very excited to have a new activity over there. They've had several exhibits recently, several activities onsite where they've had people from the community come and participate. So they're excited to be reopening their programs to the public. They do have a current exhibit up right now regarding the Western Allianz. Alianza to celebrate the Latino heritage in our community. I recommend everyone go take a look. It's quite beautiful. And they are continuing to work on their strategic planning. So they're moving ahead full speed after coming out of COVID and getting back to what they do best, which is engage with the public and invite the community into the museum. I also attended the MCAG, Mendocino Council of Governments meeting last Monday. And the most exciting part of that meeting was representative from Caltrans District One, Clean California Program came and spoke to us remotely. And she was acknowledging that the second round of community grants is coming up. And essentially, these grants are for small communities, underserved communities, to help with cleanup and beautification efforts. And it's a rather straightforward application process, and it does include free, what is the word? Essentially, they have someone on staff who will help build those applications.
Yeah, I believe admin support. Dusty, I'm looking to you, you know.
I think admin support sounds good. Can we call it that?
Yeah, I actually have it up on my screen now. I'm looking at the awards from last year. We're anticipating, there's a, should I just stand up? I kind of wanted to practice a little bit English.
You never knew practice, Dusty.
Yeah. So Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director, good to see everybody. Aware of this round two, this beautification grant through Caltrans. There's a seminar to provide some more details. I think it's on November 2. Your staff has signed up and will be attending that. We do have, we do know who our contact is for our area that we can ask questions for, get assistance from. There are a plethora of different opportunities that would fit under our existing city council goals. So we look forward to certainly taking a look at the opportunity, understanding, you know, what types of projects they're looking to fund, and then matching that up with something that we think will get funding, whether it's competitive or non-competitive, but certainly look for something to match what they intend to fund. And as always, we'll be bringing that in front of council and the public to seek comment and potential support. So, yeah, appreciate you calling that out. And I also just want to note, just to kind of brag about the city of Willets a little bit, we, just the community development department is managing $8.8 million of grants. That's 14 different grants that we're managing. I also agree that we have an excellent finance director. We got him from the city of Roner Park. Manny told me that Roner Park, I don't know, 45,000 people, little bit larger staff than us, just possibly. They're like half of that, you know? And I was talking to the CTC to get some allocation of one of our grants. And the staff member was like, Willets, you guys, you guys are kicking, you guys are doing very well for yourselves. So it was good just to see that Willets is getting that reputation. You know, we've had some staff take on some different opportunities from the community development department. It's been a little bit of a skeleton crew. Luckily, we got Davy Bowles. Taylor Perry is our new city planner. Excellent city planner, future director, whatever ambition she has. You're going to get to meet her some more at our next meeting. We have a use permit modification, urban forestry management plan to bring forward another grant project. So we're getting our staff back up and looking forward to taking on some new opportunities, such as this Caltrans grant. We're getting through some other projects. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Dusty.
This is an open call. Anyone who wants to join a winning team, we have some vacancies up in community development. So please come down and talk to us.
Yes. Our fine human resources director, Karen Stevenson. We are in the process of hiring an office assistant, a community development specialist. This is a great opportunity for a talented individual. You know, you see what happens when you hire local talent. We certainly seek that out. If you're a good writer, you're willing to learn and work hard, it is somewhat an entry-level type position. And, you know, we're willing to coax somebody up and give them a really cool opportunity to get a good job here at the city. So, you know, please contact myself or Karen Stevenson, our human resources director, if you're interested. And, yep, I really appreciate the support that the council has given to the community development department.
Thank you, Dusty.
I forgot to report on Sonoma Clean Power, which is our electricity provider in our county now. Unless you choose to opt out and stay with PG&E, you are automatically part of Sonoma Clean Power. But PG&E is the grid that delivers the power, which is sometimes a problem. But the meetings, I'm an alternate, so I don't actually get to vote, and I don't usually even report out. But I really find their meetings quite informative and fascinating. There's so much going on with community choice aggregates such as Sonoma Clean Power statewide and locally, and what happens with the California Public Utilities Commission and their rulings. The executive director, Jeff Cypress, is really amazing, and he's such an advocate for green energy, and both in Sonoma Clean Power and statewide following legislation. I'd love to have him come back at least once a year and report on what they're doing. And I just should also mention their staff person who's trying to promote Evergreen, which is their 100% local and green, no fossil fuels at all. That plan, they would love all of the municipalities in their service area, if possible, to start taking advantage of it, which is a little bit more expensive than the regular service. But it enables them to seek out local renewable sources, so increases solar power generation and so forth. So I know I've talked to Brian about it, and we're looking for some ways we can take baby steps towards that. It is a little bit more expensive, so we don't want to hurt our city finances, but we do want to be supportive of that effort to localize our energy sources.
Thank you, Madge. All right. Item 12, good and welfare. Anybody from the council have any good and welfare they'd like to share?
Yeah. On Sunday, WELL and the League of Women Voters of Mendocino County, and the Sonoma Clean, not the Sonoma, the Mendocino.
League of Women Voters.
Yeah, I said League of Women Voters, I think. And the Mendocino Women's Political Coalition and Little Lake Range sponsored a candidates forum. And we heard from Measure O and Measure P. And that's why I feel fairly knowledgeable about those, good presentations on those. And then we had seven of the eight candidates that are running for the Willet School Board. One person chose not to come, but the other six that are on the ballot, plus a write-in candidate, were all there. And it was really quite fascinating. And I just want to say, all of them care about the community, care about our kids, think teachers and administrative and support staff should get paid better because we're way behind other jurisdictions. And so really, any of them would be probably good on the school board. But, you know, it was really nice to get to know them, hear what they emphasized. So I think candidates forums and election forums are a real benefit to the community.
Mayles?
Well, I saw Madge there. I stopped by. Sunday for me was kind of a whirlwind. I started out at the museum at the West Alanza exhibit. And then I moved over to Blue Zones with our opening remarks by Judson there. And then I ended up at the candidates forum. And kind of got my learn-on in town. And then I, last night, I ran into Manny and Brian at Senator McGuire's presentation here at the firehouse. And I know the fire department gave us there, or gave the community a spot there, but I figured I won't take Brian's thunder from that. But it was kind of nice to start kind of seeing people out in public again. So.
Larry, anything?
Not a thing.
Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge one more time before we end our meeting tonight, how much I appreciate the staff, city staff, for how they've transformed this room and made it accessible again for our council meetings. This is our first time, as Brian stated, back in person. Chambers look great. And if you'd seen it a couple of months ago, you'd know how much hard work they put in. So I really do appreciate it. It's nice to be back. It's nice to see all your faces. Thank you, management team, for being here tonight. And we do not have closed sessions. So I think with that, at, what time is it? I can't see without my eyeballs.
7:31.
7:31. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.